Good evening. I'd like to call the February 13th regular business meeting of the Culpeper County School Board to order. Is there a motion to consider the requests by Barbara Brown, school board member, to participate in this meeting through electronic communication due to illness?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Our roll call is six present and Ms. Brown is electronically present. I would ask the audience to join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are now going to our presentations and recognitions. The first is our student recognition for the National Leap for Literacy Published Authors. And would the sponsor, Ms. Melissa Zay, step forward to tell us about our students and their accomplishments? Thank you, Ms. Zay.
Hello. Hi. Is that good? Yes, so we have two students. Unfortunately, Lane was not able to join us this evening due to illness, but we have Kendall with us. And Kendall and Lane participated in an eight-week writing program last school year, and we hosted it as an after-school club. They worked through all the steps of the writing process to create finished books. At the end of the process, we submitted their books to be considered for professional illustration and to be published and sold on Amazon. And Kendall and Lane were both selected by the program. And so their books are officially on Amazon. I think one of them has a five-star rating. And we're very, very excited for them. And yeah, they actually get to, every six months, they get to keep the royalties from their sales, too, which is really, really cool. Yeah.
Will Lane come up? No, not Lane. This is Kendall.
I think we all each have a copy that is autographed, so it's worth a lot of money.
Congratulations to Kendall, and thank you, Ms. Zay. Our next recognition is for the 2022 Class Four All-State Football Second Team. And would our sponsor, Mr. Brian Lowry, come forward to tell us about his students and their accomplishments? Bring him up. Yes.
So as they're coming up, we'll just get this rolling. One thing that I'm extremely proud of is the leadership of these two young men, and talking about Brayden Walker first, being his second-year head football coach, kind of trying to build a program after COVID and everything, and the change in regime, if you will. Brayden was instrumental in building a quality program. Something we've kind of brought in is every year is a new team, and last year was Team 15, and next year is Team 16, because it was the 15th year of Eastern View football. And really, the unquestioned leader this past year was Brayden Walker. So not only is he an athletic talent, as a center, there's only two centers selected, or I should say, one per team. There's only two centers selected for the whole all-state team, first and second team. Brayden was one of those, too. His athletic talent is undeniable, but his leadership, his person, his maturity, that stands out far more as you get to know the young man. And he'll be going to Elon next year on a full ride-to-play center for them. Very excited to watch him and watch him grow and continue down that path. One thing I'm also really proud about him is that he went from not having any region votes as an offensive lineman, he is a defensive lineman. He was unanimous center for district, unanimous center for all-region, and then second team. So that's quite a big growth from the year before as a junior. Talking about Brett Clatterball, he is the leader for this coming year, for sure. But one thing that's kind of exciting for him is, I think in today's day and age, it's very easy, people want to talk about themselves, and they like to kind of put things on the internet. Brett's not one of those people, and when you can have other people talk about for you, that speaks volumes. So I'm sitting in the all-region meeting, and we're talking about linebackers, they're about to come up, about to vote on them. And it's a virtual meeting, I'm not sure who the Richmond coach was, but it's someone from outside of our district, and he gets on there and he goes, guys, before we start, if we don't vote that Eastern View kid first team, we don't know what we're doing. Right? And so this is somebody who wouldn't even play throughout the year, he just has that reputation, that film. All right? So as a freshman, Brett had 150-something tackles. As a sophomore, he had 120. Tends to go down when people run away from you, when you have 150 the year before. But we've built around these two, and we're excited for the process, we're very, very proud of these two.
Thank you.
[applause]
Also, these two are traveling to Virginia Beach on Friday and Saturday for the state wrestling tournament, so imagine having to face that right now.
[laughter]
I told them not to forgive us when they're famous.
Thank you very, very much. Our next item is a presentation from Girls on the Run, Ms. Kathy Butler.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm trying to work the clicker. There we go. So Girls on the Run, we envision a girl where every girl knows that she can do anything she wants, as you saw earlier with the young lady here, writing a book. As little as 100 years ago, women didn't think they could write a book. So we're definitely opening doors and changing minds all over the world. So we say we're much more than a running program, we're looking to make that transformative change in girls. So Girls on the Run emphasizes five Cs plus one: competence, character, caring, competence, connection, plus a community, which aligns well with the Virginia Department of Education goal to prepare future-ready graduates with their critical thinking skills, collaboration, communication skills, creative thinking skills, and citizenship skills. To show girls that they have power and potential to make a difference in their community and on society, each team creates and executes a local community service project. This experience demonstrates to the girls that they have an unimaginable strength that comes from helping others. Girls have chosen to complete a variety of different projects, as these are very much girl-led. They have made toys for the animal shelter, they have collected food for the food closet, they have cleaned up trash on the playground, including those masks that ended up everywhere during COVID. They helped kindergarten teachers cut out manipulatives for use in their classrooms. They learned that even though they're young, they can have an impact on the community and make it even better. Running is the tool we use to inspire and motivate these girls, to encourage lifelong health and fitness, and build confidence through their accomplishments. Important social, psychological, and physical skills are developed and reinforced throughout the program. At each season's conclusion, the girls and their buddies complete a 5K event, which gives them a tangible sense of achievement, as well as framework for setting and achieving life goals. And it teaches girls that they can set an achievable big goal that they once thought was impossible. At Girls on the Run, they don't have to run, but like life, they can't sit on their butts, they do have to keep moving forward. So we encourage them to walk, skip, hop. We've even had a cartwheel at the finish line, one of my favorites. We're so excited to be celebrating our 10-year anniversary this year of serving girls in Culpeper, Faukeere, Fredericksburg, Madison, Rappahannock, Spotsylvania, and Stafford Counties. Our spring season actually started today, and we have several teams across Culpeper and Faukeere County in the spring. We are so grateful of the partnership with Culpeper County Public Schools. In fall of 2021, we were able to serve 114 girls. In spring 2022, 76 girls, and in fall, 140 girls. Registration for these teams are done on a lottery basis to ensure that it's equitable to everybody, because our internet service can be questionable in areas of the county. So a lottery is run, so all the girls can register, and the computer chooses a lottery. Any girls that ended up wait-listed on the team, which we try to keep very few, we try to get as many coaches as we can, we go ahead and pre-select them next time, so everybody gets a fair shot at it. This partnership also encourages teachers to become trained coaches to support the program. This has been a benefit not only to the girls on the team, but to the schools, as the teachers are able to take these lessons and trainings back into their classroom. We offer not only training in our program to the coaches, but we also offer trauma-informed training, darkness into light sexual abuse training, and gatekeeper suicide awareness training. We also provide CPR and first aid training to all of our coaches to ensure the safety of the girls. Our goal with our coach-training program is to not only train people to coach our programs, but to add value to our community, as these folks can use the lessons learned in training into other aspects of their lives. With classroom behavior cited as a huge issue for schools and teachers, we can report that 99% of our coaches said that the girls formed positive relationships within their team. And this quote on the slide was from a principal. "I support Goder because I see the value it has on girls' lives. It also has values on the lives of the staff in my building, and positively impacts the climate of our school. The girls are able to be a part of something bigger than themselves and learn how to support others as well." We can speak directly to the overall improvement in the school community. Another teacher was quoted as saying, "The program allowed girls to reconnect with others outside their classrooms. Girls were reminded how to make friends, how to show empathy and compromise." 98% of coaches answered that they develop positive relationships with the girls on their team. The first quote on this slide speaks directly to the relationship piece. "I formed relationships with students at my school and could assist them during the school day since we have built that trust." We also heard, "I got to get to know my girls better, and I was better equipped for dealing with situations that arise in my classroom." We also heard, "I have been able to build relationships with girls that I would not have had the opportunity to without Goder due to the nature of my classroom." Another barrier to note, we've heard from principals that they were reluctant to add anything else to the teachers' plates. And honestly, I felt the same way, too, with, we've had so much going on in the world. But in our survey, we were surprised to find several quotes that helped us counter this preconception. We asked about how the personal impact of the program, about the personal impact the program had on them, and teachers said, "It is definitely the best way to end a day that is extremely stressful for them right now." As you can see from this second quote, "Goder was such a positive way to end the school day. The year had been stressful, but when I was able to end the day with Goder, the day felt much more positive." How does Goder enhance the teacher experience? 98% of the teachers surveyed said they developed positive relationships with the girls. 88% said they would return to coach another season. "It helped me emotionally connect with former students and see their growth," another teacher was quoted. There are several studies outlining the positive mental health outcomes for adults who volunteer, including helping with stress management, reducing feelings of social disconnection, supporting mental health, and buffering the effects of depression. Not only are they inspiring and helping these girls, but the girls are inspiring and helping them. This full-circle relationship is building us a stronger community as we move forward into the future. There's a tremendous body of research on the impact of role models from outside the home, and that's our coaches, and that's our teachers. We can point out that positive adult role models not only have an impact on the emotional well-being of self-esteem and youth, they help youth develop positive identities and youth-adult relationships that can result in positive academic outcomes for youth. From one study, I found this quote, "Youth are significantly less likely to skip school, and when they have a positive adult role model, they are more likely to have academic competence, be engaged in school, and show an interest in learning." If you'd like any more information, you can call us on our main line, or email us, or follow us on our website. Again, my name is Kathy Butler, I'm the executive director for Girls on the Run Piedmont, and we teach girls to support each other, to recognize their individual power, and embrace their differences. We show them how to live with gratitude, a healthy spirit, and an open heart. We guide them not only to do this for themselves, but to give back to our community. One person can make a difference, but together, we can change the world for girls. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does anyone on the board, Ms. Butler? Let me ask if they have, anyone has any questions? Anyone have any questions or comments for Ms. Butler?
It's a great program. I hear from young girls all the time who love it, enjoy it, look forward to it, so thank you for your work with it.
Thank you.
Any other, Ms. Butler?
How many teams do you have? How many coaches? And how do you divide the kids up, the girls up?
So teams consist of three adult coaches and up to 15 girls. Our spring teams are smaller, some of the schools are concerned about SOL testing, so they don't want to have teams in the spring. But in the fall, we were in all the Culpeper County Elementary and Middle Schools.
Ms. Burnett?
Yes, I just want to say thank you, Kathy, for coming and presenting. I know that Goder had a great impact on myself, as well as a coach in Rappahannock County for a year. Absolutely loved it, loved watching the girls grow and learn some very valuable skills in how to work with other people, especially people with differences, and so on and so forth. It was an amazing experience to see them grow that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Butler. Ms. Laura Hoover is now going to give recognition to the School Board Appreciation Month.
[inaudible]
Yes?
One of the students that just arrived, could you stop there?
Sure. Is this Lane? Lane is here. Good, grab Lane.
Thank you.
We know all about you, Lane. We know all about you. Congratulations. Thank you very much, Lane. And congratulations. And now, Ms. Laura Hoover will be here, oh, recognition of School Board Appreciation Month.
Good evening. The month of February marks the annual observance of School Board Appreciation Month, a time to salute the work of school board members and celebrate public education. The theme of this year's celebration, Rising to the Challenge, reflects the leadership of local school board members as they serve their local divisions and advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders on behalf of all students. Local school boards keep the public in charge of public schools since they represent their community's beliefs and values. Tonight, we take a minute to celebrate you, our school board, and we have had our schools have come and showered our board members with gifts, but we had to move them because we couldn't see them. But we thank our schools, and you can see how much we appreciate all that you do, and we invite everyone in the community to join us in recognizing and celebrating the work that you do each and every day as our school board.
[applause] After the next one, okay. Oh, thank you, Ms. Hoover. And while Ms. Hoover is passing those out to the school board, our letter E is a recognition the School Board Clerk Appreciation Week is February 13 through 17. And to give a proper recognition, would Mrs. Jameson and Mr. Shomo please come forward? Get over here. Come on up here, Mr. Shomo. Oh, he's a gentleman. Just a little bit to say to you first, tonight, the board, all of us, we're 100% agree that we would like to recognize Jeff Shomo, the clerk of the board, and Pearl Jameson, the deputy clerk, by letting them know we appreciate their knowledge, dedication, problem-solving abilities, and support for us and all things CCPS. We are also grateful for your friendship, and as a small recognition, we would like you to know, you are valued this week, as well as the other 51 weeks in the year. Thank you for all you do. Thank you. One more time for the clerks of the board. There now, Ms. Jameson, that didn't hurt, did it? And we are now moving on to the student principal reports. We will start with the Superintendent Student Advisory Group report. Oh, but before we do that, if there is anyone in the audience that would like to leave before we go on with the meetings, those who had, they may go. Please, please, no, you're fine. It's a school night, you know. Thank you for coming. And now we have CCHS senior Alexandra DeLeon to come and give us the Student Advisory Group
Good evening. Happy School Board Month, I heard. My name is Alexandra DeLeon, and I am a senior at Culpeper County High School. This is my first year on the SAG group. It is great to talk with other students and learn about their interests and plans for the future. Being in a group with other students who have a plan for the futures is very encouraging. In case you were interested, I will be joining the Army Reserves after high school, and then after the Army, I will be attending Liberty University for four years. In addition to our future plans, we have discussed the Student Risk Behavior Survey. Something that stood out in our discussion was the increase in teen mental health issues, specifically stress, anxiety, and depression. Suicidal thoughts and actions have also increased. Another thing that stood out was the lack of healthy nutrition and exercise. Some things we discussed to help these issues are a potential for a study hall at school, adjusting the homework policy and recreational trips organized through the schools, such as hiking, snowboarding. We also talked about how school workloads can impact stress levels, and changing the homework policy and adding a study hall can also help. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any board member have a question for Alexandra?
Not really a question, but thank you for coming to speak just tonight, and I know it's nerve-wracking, and we appreciate your input and that of the group. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your report.
Can you come back just for a second?
She really wants to leave.
She really wants to leave? I'm gonna go with you, too, when she said everybody could leave.
Oh.
I'm kidding. I just want to say thank you so much for your choice, after high school, to initially going to the reserves, because I think I'm statistically all right on this, you're joining the less than 1%, the less than 1% that choose to serve our country. So thank you for that, and best of luck, and I'll see you more in our meetings. Best of luck, and thank you for that choice, and for that to build your future plans.
Thank you.
Great job, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have Floyd T. Bins Middle School report, Ms. Andrea Kilby.
Good evening. Thank you all for this opportunity. I'm going to expand a little bit on the presentation that we had earlier, as we were talking about the students Kendall and Lane, who have their published books available on Amazon. So over the last couple of years, we've been really fortunate at Bins to be able to offer more and more after-school activities and after-school clubs, from the board game club to the track club, to our drama club, and also, as you saw, our creative writing club. And so in that creative writing club, as you've heard, we had two students who participated in, along with everyone else, we had about 12 students altogether, who were then chosen to have their books published, and they were two of the five, of five students in the nation, chosen to have that opportunity. So we've got, we had a book launch party, so we have a little video to share with you.
I am here with some absolutely wonderful people that we are so proud of, Kendall Bob and Lane Arcato, and Ms. Melissa Zay, who is the one who is in charge and spearheaded this whole book-writing program and process. And so we started an after-school club last year, had some really great participation, and then we were fortunate enough that two of our participants have really published books that are available on Amazon. So I want to say, tell you what it was.
Yeah, so like Miss Kilby said, I'm at Stan Working at Center Camp, and we brought his program here, so his program is an eight-week program. You can, some teachers do it as part of their curriculum, for their classroom teachers to do an after-school club. And once a week, his would come to me, he would watch a video lesson, and it would work through all eight steps of the writing process. And then on Thursdays of that same week, the students would be given access to a Zoom link, where they could hop in and interact with an author, so you could ask questions and hear them speak, get some inspiration. We worked through the whole process, and at the end of the eight weeks, we worked on editing, and they did their, like, their drawings and whatnot, and we submitted, I believe we submitted a total of four books to be considered for publishing. And at the end of the program, Stanford jacked me and told me that not only one, but two of our books were published.
Hi, my name is Kendall, and this is my story, Halloween Scare. My story was inspired by how I'm here in a mini children's case. I want to showcase that it's okay to ask for help when you're afraid.
Hi, my name is Lane. My story is called "To Another World." My story was inspired by a dream I had when I was younger. I've always wanted to be an author, and this was my duty to sit out.
So as you saw, we also do have their books available in the library, and we did also include copies of each of those books for you all in your bags, and they are autographed. And we are excited that we will also be continuing with that club in the fall of this upcoming year. So we're super excited to have other students be able to participate in that as well. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Any questions for Ms. Kilby?
I'm not sure the father in the front row could look any more proud than he does.
Proud father over there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It is now time for delegations. I would have to read this little thing to you first, before we call our first delegation. Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding Culpeper County Public Schools. There will be no action taken at the board at this meeting, and such items will be referred to the appropriate administrators for future information and research. Personalities and behaviors of employees are not to be presented during this period, but are to be reported to the employee's immediate supervisor. Each speaker shall limit his or her remarks Each speaker shall limit his or her remarks to three minutes. No speaker shall be permitted to allocate any portion of his or her speaking time to another speaker. No speaker may address the Board more than once per meeting. Delegations wishing, wishing to address the Board are requested to sign in prior to the meeting with their name, address, and topic. A sheet for this purpose was provided at the entrance to the meeting room. That being said, we have one person who did sign up, Mr. Lane. If you would come forward.
Good evening. I wanted to speak about drug prevention in light of the recent incident involving a student at Eastern View. I do have some background with this sort of thing. I'm a past Chair of the Community Services Board, and played a key role in bringing Culpeper's first Board Certified Addiction Specialists onto their staff. Two years ago, I wrote a 20-page white paper on drug policy at the request of Senator John Bell, Chair of the State Substance Abuse Services Council. Senator Bell lost a son to a drug overdose, but for the past two years, I've written a newsletter on drug policy. I sent number 107 out this morning. I see hundreds of articles a week on drug policy, so I have a good sense of what's going on around the country. One of my readers of the newsletter is John Epstein, formerly of the DC area, but now living in Oregon. He also lost a son to overdose, a single pill he brought, he bought from someone on Snapchat. He started an organization focused on drug prevention, and it has become probably the most effective youth prevention group in the nation. It's called Song For Charlie. He has become well-connected with Snapchat and other social media companies, and they are working with him. Two weeks ago, he was in DC presenting at the SAMSA Prevention Conference. Recently, Song For Charlie worked with the Department of Education on two webinars on fentanyl and prevention. I forwarded the links to the superintendent. I hope they were widely viewed by staff and Board members. Over a year ago, I forwarded Song For Charlie literature to the Director of Student Services, and at his request, printed up 20 flyers, but I've heard nothing since. I hope that all Board members will check out the website songforcharlie.org, and urge the implementation of its many programs and resources. While Mr. Epstein's group has a national focus, they also know the importance of working locally. I asked if he would personally work with our schools to help develop a prevention plan. He has agreed to do that. He told me he recently contacted Montgomery County, Maryland, schools where he grew up. They have also taken, taken him up on his offer. Drug use, especially involving fentanyl, is a tough problem, but we can't do much about precursor chemicals coming from China, or clandestine labs in Mexico, or even smuggling across the border. But there are things we can do locally. Surveys have shown that in spite of media coverage, half of students still are unaware of the risk of street drugs. Two weeks ago, a student at an Arlington school died at school from a fentanyl-laced pill. Culpeper now has an opportunity to become a leader in fentanyl awareness and prevention. I hope you will take advantage of that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the Board at this time? Yes, sir.
I have to quote my name.
That's, that's okay, come on up. If you would just state your name.
Yeah, sure. My name is Jitendra. I am a Jitendra man. I live in Culpeper Town. First of all, thank you for this opportunity, Board members, Madam Chair. I really appreciate this opportunity. I've been living in Culpeper, this is my first time visiting here. I've been living here 20 years, never been here. I did not even know where you guys meet. But I came to see, and I have a small concern here. I'm actually blessed to say that I'm part of Culpeper County. I raised two kids here. My son is Eastern View High School Senior. So, most of you know that applying for colleges is a stressful thing. So, what I realized is, my son, he gets, he gets everything, I mean, he's a top student, he gets all As in the class, he's doing dual enrollment, he gets all As in the Germana. He's also doing a CTEC, which I'm blessed to say that I'm part of Culpeper. He's doing EMT there, all As there. So, I thought he's in a good, good path. However, when I realized that his GPA is just 4.1, I'm really shocked, because when I looked at my friends who live in Northern Virginia, their GPA is 4.8 if they attend a community college, 4.8, 5.0. More and more colleges nowadays are only looking at GPS. I think our Culpeper County students have unfair disadvantage. We are rating our students very poorly. This is gonna be a big issue in the coming years. I'm not worried about my son, but the future kids will miss out on colleges and also scholarships. I'm just telling you, VCU gives full ride if you are, if you have 4.8 GPA. Nobody in Culpeper County will get that at this kind of rating we have. I went to the counselors, they, they say the maximum we give is 4.2. You don't get any scholarship in any college with 4.2 GPA. So, I don't know what we are doing in our Culpeper County. Maybe I'm wrong, but we need to address this, we need to investigate and see what is going on in the, in the county, how we are rating our kids. So, that's what I just wanted to put it out. I'm not an expert on GPA rating, but with more and more colleges jumping onto, instead of SAT, they're only looking at GPA, this is gonna be a very big, at least for the merit scholarships, this is gonna be a challenge. I checked with all the students who applied for VCU, none of them got any merit scholarship. Everybody is all As, dual enrolled, nobody got scholarships. So, I'm just trying to put this in front of you. Thank you very much for your time. If you have any questions, I'm here.
We do not have questions at this time. Someone would be in touch with you after research is done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last month, a six-year-old boy shot his elementary school teacher in Newport News, Virginia. The lawyer of the teacher who was shot tells how administrators were warned three times on the day of the shooting that the little boy had a gun at school, and had threatened to beat up another child. Administrators did not act on that information. A substitute teacher from the same elementary school appeared on live TV, stating the behavior in the school was unruly and often ignored by their administrators. She also said that teachers felt unsupported by their administration in this school. It made me wonder if our teachers here in Culpeper feel safe and supported by their administrators. I remember a time not long ago when I was still teaching in the public school. Discipline was lacking at my school. I, along with my colleagues, felt unsupported by my administration. It is difficult to teach when unruliness and behavior issues go unchecked. When you're a public school teacher, you must follow the chain of command. A teacher doesn't report on or tell on their administrator. Repercussions and retaliations are a real thing for people who speak out and criticize authority. I know, I served in those trenches, and when I retired, I felt safe being out of the system, and finally had the courage to address the concerns felt by my colleagues and myself. I wonder if any of our teachers in Culpeper schools currently feel unsupported by their administrators, and face the sad reality that Newport News could happen here in our community. How would you know what teachers feel about the support they receive from their administrators, unless you had a way for teachers and staff to safely report their concerns without fear of repercussions? This is a real problem for teachers in our system. When a teacher reports discipline or safety concerns to their administrator and sees those problems not being addressed, it's frustrating and unsettling. I don't want any of our staff to experience those feelings. Promoting a healthy learning environment where everyone feels safe should be our number one concern. I propose Culpeper schools establish a whistleblower protocol for teachers to report concerns without fear of repercussions or retaliation. The current Teacher Roundtable simply is not a satisfactory way to privately share teacher trepidations. I realize there could always be complainers in any group, but it should be a simple task to recognize trends in problems that people report. Concerns should then be addressed promptly. I suggest to you to research and launch a whistleblower protocol for the protection of teachers, staff, and students. Proactive measures will only improve and enhance a healthy learning environment. Teachers who feel safe and supported have a tendency to remain in their current teaching environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheets. Are there any other citizens wishing to address the Board at this time? With no one, no one stepping forward, then the delegation's portion is closed. Thank you very much. I now ask her a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the approval of the minutes from January 9, and January 9th and 30th, and the payment of payroll, the payroll and payment of bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, action items. Is there a motion to approve the authorize the superintendent to sign the lease contract with Millstone Towers for a cell tower at CCHS, subject to approval by Culpeper County?
So moved.
Discussion, Dr. Brandt.
Madam Chairman, members of the Board, we've shared some information about this possibility with you. You see the potential contract. I just wanted to remind the Board that we have been in consultation with our legal counsel on the document, to the point of, the version that you see now has been vetted by our legal, legal counsel. Additionally, as a reminder, this moving forward is subject to the approval of the cell tower on school property by Culpeper County. Dr. O'Brien is here this evening, if you have any particular questions while we have a motion and a second, that you, if you have any other questions you may have before you vote on this matter. Administration recommends approval.
Do any members have any other questions? Ms. Brown, do you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. In that case, I will ask all those in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, that would be 7-0. Ms. Brown, did you vote aye?
Yeah.
Thank you. Next action item is the authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract for the CMS roof.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Chairman, I think, I think this one's self-explanatory, and last week, the supervisors released our, our funds from our capital fund projects, so happy to get this moving forward.
Any other discussion?
Ms. Baker.
Ms. Hutchins.
I just hope that, and I've shared this with the superintendent earlier today, that in the process, I know it's not in the scope of the contract for the replacement of the roof. However, if we go along this process and we find something major that needs to be addressed, that we don't just cover it up with the roof, that we go and, and address it, referring back to the broken pipe at Floyte Bins, which should have been replaced when the addition was put on 20 years ago, and it was not. So, if we see something of major need, I would hope that we would look at it and see if we can do something about it, rather than covering it up and then having a problem down the line. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins. Any other comments?
Madam Chairman, if I may, Ms. Hutchins want to clarify covering it up. Staff, the school division, no one covered it up. It was actually in the wall 20 years ago, a pipe fitting that, whether it was brand-new or not, during that renovation of Floyte Bins.
Right.
It, it was either overlooked or not replaced as new. Then it was encased in drywall behind the wall, thus being covered up in that way. So, I wanted to clarify a cover-up.
Okay. Thank you.
It was not a cover-up.
Not a cover-up.
Okay.
Built-in cover-up. Covered. How is that, covered?
Covered up.
Yes, thank you.
Poor pipe.
And I'd like to clarify that in the capital planning meeting, we talked about, and this won't come on for some reason, we talked about the fact that, right, there were change orders, and that anything that was noticed would be taken care of. So, that was discussed at great length, so, yeah.
Thank you. With no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion carried, 7-0. Onto Superintendent and Staff Reports.
Madam Chairman, members of the Board, FY '24 Budget Update, as I shuffle papers over here, I'm not sure why, because there's no information here, actually. But other, other than my reminder that last Sunday, the Sunday before last, was Budget Sunday, and the respective Houses of the General Assembly presented their budgets, the House and the Senate, this past week, Thursday or so, Friday, the, both Houses approved those budgets, and we will not receive a Calc tool in terms of what those plans look like. Now, preliminarily, both plans are favorable to Culpeper County Public Schools, and that both plans increase K-12 funding across the Commonwealth, I would say fairly significantly, but we have to see how that actually fleshes out with respect to those plans, because neither plan actually address the problem that occurred with the miscalculation that was done by the Department of Education related to the grocery tax. It was a grocery tax error that we shared with you all, and that what we built in terms of our estimation for funds for next year, was about a $1.1 million deficit in that mistake that they made for Culpeper County. So, with the new funds, it, it is not addressing that item, but it may address other items, particularly things like, finally, the full elimination of the support staff cap. So, that could be a benefit, as we would use that to fund our non-SOQ positions. As you know, that is an issue funding our staff. About two-thirds of our folks are SOQ. The other third that help us operate day in and day out are not SOQ, thus they're local-funded. So, we're anxious to see how that comes to pass with respect to the two budgets. The conferees will hammer out what their differences are, to include but not limited to the Governor's version. We're hopeful of a Calc tool maybe later this week, anticipate something for the work session, to know a little better where we stand in terms of going forward. So, no numbers, because all we've seen now are statewide numbers, large numbers. You can't really generalize that, as you know, based on composite index, what we may receive until we actually receive that calculation, calculation tool instrument. Be happy answering questions you may have, we're watching it closely and keeping you in the loop as much as possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Brandt. Are there any questions for Dr. Brandt at this time? Thank you. We'll move on to our Finance Report with Mr. Shomo.
Good evening. Tonight, we'll start, as usual, with our count for students. We are down additional 37 students, but the 62 down number is still a really good number for us. It's marginal, and it's manageable for this time of year. So, right now, we will be looking hard at the numbers at the end of March, that's when the real numbers count, and that's what we're funded on. And like Dr. Brandt said, also with that budget that comes, adjusted numbers for this year even. So, when that comes, that's when it really all starts truing up. So when that comes, that's when it really all starts truing up and what we can expect. But right now, we're experiencing not bad numbers here at all. So that's really actually an even number for us in the past. The next page, this is still the budget we're operating under right now. Like Dr. Brad said, I go back just one, the state number is the one we're looking at hard for revenues, with the adjustment, even in this year's budget, we got about $600,000 possible cut in revenues for the sales tax. So not only affects next year, but it affects, go backwards, going forward. The revenue has an even adjustment now that we even know about for the state. Go for one right there. So the state number for the, right now, at the 62 percent, that number, we possibly could have adjustment to that, and we're expecting like $67 million from the state. In that $67 million, we also got $3 million that's allocated for construction projects that we've already got a list to kind of identify for. But again, there is, it might be a little trick to that because we need to possibly carry some of those funds over for some of the projects that we will have ongoing that's earmarked for that. But the $64 million is basically, 299 is the operating revenues that we're constantly monitoring that we need to balance to, to make sure we don't overspend. And like I said, by the end of March, first April, hopefully we'll have a good estimate of that. We're fairly confident in with the savings and stuff that we have in the budget from the positions that we're able to fill, it helps us with all this. So also, we have not seen anything that is really out of ordinary for expenditures. Going to the next page shows the expenditures by category. We're pretty much tracking those to true. So there's nothing there. We go to the two slides on the next slide after this. This is the one that I really pay attention to, is the monthly expenditures. The 7% for December was actually less than it was last year. So in the balance remaining, we, right now, we have 57% remaining last year at that time. We have 56, so even, that shows you it's a little bit better for the expenditure side, which is the one that we really hold till we see what our revenues are going to look like, and then we will turn some of the other things we've been holding loose. So all in all, the expenditures are tracking reasonably well, with the little savings in them to go. That's about it for my report tonight. Everybody cross their fingers and hope for the best. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Shomo?
No, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Operations report, Dr. O'Brien?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Brands, how are you this evening? It's been a great Monday. I'm happy to give you the operations report for this month. So we're going to start with facilities and maintenance. As some of you may know, we have added additional space at our central office location on the first floor, where we've designated that space for our human resources. We do have some nice new furniture in there, and we've also done all the work in terms of running all of the IT, as well as assembling this furniture so that that space is readily available, and all the phones work, and we've even added some cameras on the outside. So we have security, we have some things in place, but it is definitely a great space for our HR department, and I get the sense that it will be well-used once we start flowing folks through there. We have completed the pavement of the pathway at CCHS and CMS. This is the walking path that connects the Meadows Housing Development over to the actual campus itself. It is a much better walk now, and it also ensures that kids aren't having to walk in mud or step in any dirt or whatnot to get to where they need to that are within the walk zone. We also paved the e-bus charging pads, which is a great advantage as well, so that we know those electric cables aren't sitting in any water or nobody's standing in water when they go to plug these buses in. So it's, it just helps to give us a nice look to where we're keeping those buses and making sure they're in a controlled environment in their location. The work continues on the baseball field. We do have a set that we're certain they're going to be done before the baseball season does actually begin. They took this picture probably a week and a half ago. They've completed the work on the dugouts in terms of raising them, as well as putting the roofing material on it, and they were painting it the last I saw. So it's coming together quite well, the work at the baseball field. Other items, our work orders in maintenance and facilities is up 5%. Most of the increase that we've had lately has been plumbing issues. For some reason, there's a tendency for folks to start flushing things down our toilets. That's really required in our plumbers to put a lot of effort and work into fixing those. Elementary, we do have the landscape bidding project going on. We hope to award that contract pretty soon. The generator at Emerald Hills in place, and on Friday, they actually are going to check it and turn it on to make sure it goes through all its quality assurance checks. We did the closing end of classroom spaces at Eastern View. They did that this weekend in terms of getting the drywall up and putting the walls up. They're still waiting on the doors, and we've received about 376 new work orders in January, but we closed 339. So maintenance and facilities is humming right along. Food service, as you can see, all of our meals are up when compared to last January. However, I had to go back in time and look at what January looked like last year, and we were out for about a week due to snow. So I think that's impacting those numbers as well. And we also have, I gotta get closer.
No, no, just don't talk about snow.
Don't talk, yeah. I don't want to jinx us, all right? Monthly, you can see how we did from December to January and where the daily average sits. So we're still running about average for our food service as projected. Technology, we installed 275 of the 316 cameras we've been working on this year. Last month, we were about 80%, now we're at 87. They've completed work on fixing the iBoss, the network security, and the traffic flow management, which has had a desirable impact on how our network's been responsive. A lot of teachers are talking about how it's working much better than when we were dealing with getting that working correctly. We replaced some battery backup systems. We're repairing about 280 Chromebooks a month on average, which is a lot. And we have 230 open tickets, which is one less than last month. But that gives you an idea of what the Chromebooks look like when they come in. We get a nice stack, and on the left is what those power supply backups look like. We put those on all of our local servers just to make sure that, for example, if the power glitches or goes down, that will provide electricity to keep our networks and phones and everything running for maybe up to an hour or two after that occurs. And then for transportation, we're currently meeting all of our staffing requirements, which is great news. We've completed installation of our Senovia, which is our GPS system that is now designed to work on 4G and 5G systems versus the older one. We've posted our revised routes I just did back almost January 30th, and just to kind of show you some of the changes, we routed 6,083 students in December, while in January, we routed 6,295. Now, part of that increase is we have a lot of fall sports kids who are now saying, all right, I want to ride the bus now. We've started routing them. So that kind of makes up a little bit of that difference. But I would also say probably we have some new students hopping in as well. So that's kind of what that Senovia pad looks like, the GPS system, much cleaner. It has what I call advanced options. There actually is a scanner you can attach to this where kids could have a bus ID, and they could come out and they could scan themselves onto the bus. So you'd always know what kids are on your bus at a certain time, and they could scan themselves off. Once you program and you log in, you say what route you're doing, it actually comes up and tells you what your stops are and what your next stops are based on the GPS. So it is a highly sophisticated system that we're still kind of working the bugs out, but at the same time also learning how it works. The drivers are excited, but at the same time, you know, a little timid about all of the bells and whistles this comes with. But we do have a training plan for this month where they're going to get some more details on how this all works. Any questions?
Any board members' questions? Ms. Hutchins?
The EV classrooms, were there three closed in? Two closed in?
We were closing in two, and we were closing in an office space for a counselor.
Okay. And then the, going back to the technology upgrade that you've been working on, has that taken care of, the YouTube, the ability to show and the videos and all that?
Yeah, when you talk about some of the bandwidth issues we're having, yes. That helped to resolve a lot of that so that we had to put some live streaming of like morning announcements on pause because we were trying to work out the traffic to get that situated. All that has since been resolved, so absolutely.
And the testing can go on and all the other stuff can go on and...
We could always do testing because we always have means that we can control the traffic on the network, that we can lock a lot of stuff down.
Right.
The key is to make the network as accessible as possible for our teachers and staff, and occasionally, if we have too much traffic, we could go in and we could manage what they have access to or what they don't on a given day based on the amount of traffic that's occurring. But with repairs and the new configuration that we've put in place and the new, what we call the iBoss filtering system, everything in our firewall, we've got it finally where it's working the way we expected it to, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Smith?
This is just not working. The Senovia, is that primarily to track the students or primarily, what is the biggest...
The biggest advantage of what we use now is Senovia is our GPS system that we put on the buses. So we actually have an interface that we could go and we could find where all our buses are based on the GPS. There was a time with the old system on the 3G network where you would watch a bus go up into Reva, and then it'll just stop, and we'd stare at it, and next thing you know, we would be like, where are you at now? And then, you know, we'd be down on Hoover Road, and it's because he lost connectivity out there. So those cases aren't happening anymore. We know exactly where the buses are, and we know those little holes that we have throughout Culpeper are now been resolved because we've gone to the 4G system. Granted, we always know where our buses are even when that would happen because we're always in contact with our buses. But the big advantage of this system is it's just given us that added edge as cell towers are being upgraded throughout the county.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other question? Ms. Brown, do you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
And Dr. O'Brien, does this new system also allow parents to know where the bus is and when it would be coming?
Well, that's Stop Finder. That's the app that we have, and Stop Finder is going to be improved because of these upgrades. One of the big features of Stop Finder that we've been kind of teaching our parents how to use is that you have to set up those, what's called a geo-alert, and I'm glad I'm saying this on TV, but if you have the Stop Finder app, the geo-alert tells you when the bus comes within a certain area, and you can set that up. And the big advantage to that tool is that, you know, if you have a long driveway, you could set that geo-alert up at the intersection of, for example, Hoover Road and somewhere else so that you can get your kid down the driveway before the bus actually gets there versus getting the alert that the bus is there, if that makes sense.
Yes.
So that's part of our training and the videos that we have posted online as well to help parents kind of manage that.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
If there's no other questions, thank you, Dr. O'Brien.
All right, thank you.
Number nine, board member reports. All of our reports from our committees and advisory groups are located on board docs and can be found there for your convenient reading. And now we have board member comments. We'll start, Ms. Burnett? Sorry.
It's that beanie. I just want to say thank you from all of our schools for the appreciation gifts. They are beautiful and wonderful, and I greatly appreciate them. I wanted to thank our speakers during delegation time tonight. Very informative information. Thank you for sharing. And thank you to our school board clerks for all you do, and congratulations to our students on all their successes tonight. It was wonderful to see all of their accomplishments. And happy Valentine's Day tomorrow.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. Ms. Desalee?
I guess ditto on the thanks. It's kind of overwhelming, all the presents that were brought to us this evening, and it's almost borderline embarrassing to be showered with so many gifts. Thank you so much to all the schools and for all the people who put the work into that. We really, it's very, very sweet, and we appreciate it very much. And a special thank you to both Pearl and Mr. Shomo for all the work that you do keeping us on track and reminding us of all the stuff that we forget, and so we couldn't do it without you, and we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Mrs. Luckenbill?
Exactly what they said.
Thank you, Ms. Luckenbill. Mrs. Smith?
Definitely agree. Thank you to Mr. Shomo and Ms. Jamison for, especially Ms. Jamison for keeping us in line. Thank you so much. I also want to say, I could name every school, but there's constantly a teacher going above and beyond. And just two examples. One, we saw tonight with a teacher taking time to encourage children to write a book. She did not have to do that. She could do her curriculum and do a good job without doing that above and beyond, and we have teachers in every school doing that. Another is having the privilege of being at the ribbon cutting for the store at Eastern View, the Storm Cellar, because a teacher encouraged her students to make a business plan and carry stuff out. So I could name every school, but just those two because they're recent, and I just want to say thank you for the encouragement that our students get from our teachers and the above and beyond that they do on a regular basis, so.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Hutchins?
I too want to thank all the schools for these wonderful gifts and know that we greatly appreciate you and everything that you do every day for our students because we couldn't do anything up here without you all. You are what make the schools operate. You are the ones who take care of our children, and you are greatly appreciated. I also want to thank the staff at EV in particular for their dealing with the crisis situation over that we experienced not too long ago. I know that was difficult once again, and appreciate your professionalism and working with your students to work through that. Also, I attended the Public Works Committee, the county's Public Works Committee this morning because they were going to talk about the entrance to AG, and they are very much in support of it and are getting more details, and it's going to move down the track, so to be continued, hopefully we will see it in our lifetime. That's my hope, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins. Ms. Brown?
I believe everything is possible to say. I would say ditto to all of that, and I would like to thank the board for allowing me to participate electronically tonight.
You're very welcome, Ms. Brown. Thank you. And my comments would be, I still don't know why a whole month for the school board. I'm not sure I deserve that, but I also think there's no education like a public school education. Everybody, every single person in this community makes this school their family, from our bus drivers, our food service, all of our senior staff, paraeducators, bookkeepers, assistants, everybody, mostly our teachers. I can't tell you, tomorrow is Valentine's Day, and I really believe that your school board loves every single one of you and hope you have a wonderful Valentine's Day. Thank you. I really do. Not because I'm a teacher, but, oh, well. Okay, now, we know that the reports are summarized on board docs. The membership is also listed there, and Employee Appreciation Week, our technology department, March 6th through 10th, 2023. So that is something that we really should be looking forward to because we know how much we all depend on our technology now. Our future meeting dates, our Culpeper County School Board Admin Committee will meet February 22nd at 8:00 a.m. The business work session for the school board will be February 27th at Culpeper County High School Studio. High School studio. Capital planning is March 8th. Finance committee will be March 13th, and the regular school board, March 13th. If there is no other business, I would like a motion to...
Say it again?
I think I said right?
Yes. A motion to go into closed session.
Okay, make a motion that the school board convene a closed session to consider the following personnel matters pursuant to the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A1. The appointment of certified personnel, the appointment of classified personnel, the transfer of certified personnel, the transfer of classified personnel, the separation of certified personnel, separation of classified personnel, the approval of substitute teachers for 2223, the approval of winter and spring coaching supplements for 2223 for CCHS, the approval of winter and spring coaching supplements for 2223 for EVHS, and the approval of winter and spring coaching supplements for 2223 for CMS and Floyd T. Benz Middle School.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carrying.